So.
Okay.
Uh.
Everything's going on here.
You got a can.
Two and five.
All right. Yeah, it's pretty specific what uh what you're identifying.
Instead of times.
All your shots.
I told her I was just gonna believe it. He was like, she called. This is about it.
Absolutely.
And she's like. We're walking next to the. Uh. Or whatever that's called. Apparently they use those international. That's what she wanted to do. So they 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 know. You know, seven.
Okay.
So that.
It's good.
All right.
Yep.
Right.
The board of judges was stringing law after some of this.
Oh, that's not good. All right. Call to order this regular meeting of the West Baton Rouge Planning and Zoning Commission for May sixth, twenty twenty five. Please have everybody silence all your cell phones or any other electronic devices. Uh, we'll start with the opening prayer and pledge. Ms. Jackson, you do the the prayer, please, and Russell, can you lead us in the pledge?
Let's stand our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus. Lord, first of all, we give you the honor, we give you the glory, and we give you the praise, thanking you for this day. Thanking you, Lord, for the opportunity to come before the people of our cities and take care of the business at hand. O'er Heavenly Father, we ask you to endow us with the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we would do a just job. And we give you praise, we give you honor and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. My pledge is to live in the United States of America, to the Father, who is sanctified, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice for all.
All right, item four, roll call. Please mark if you're present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Mallory. We have a quorum. Uh, item five, approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review the? Yes. The minutes, a motion to approve. I have a motion by Mr. Rebet to approve the minutes from the previous meeting and a second by Mr. Gascon. Machines are open for voting. And the minutes are approved. Item six, correspondence.
None at this time.
Thank you. All right, we'll get into it. Item seven, eight. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts. Official zoning map for rezoning request of TMI Enterprises LLC regarding parcel number zero four five one zero 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 four four oh one. Lot number JA through one A through two B, Safe Energy Drive, Port Allen, Louisiana, seven oh seven six seven, file number twenty twenty five dash oh six, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as tracks. JA dash one A dash two B containing five acres in section fifty, track seven S, range twelve E, P.O. Popper Grove Plantation. Fifty one dash forty four A rezoning from I two industrial moderate scale to I three industrial large scale. Mr. Burgon.
Yep, uh, so this property is being rezoned for the uh expansion of the uh record yard or service to the uh southwest of the property. Uh, I three is basically around it except for an I two property across the street from uh Safeway Drive. Uh, that's I two with a special use uh permit also. Um, matches the, you know, uh, record service that's currently zoned I three. Uh, minimum acreage in an industrial district is five acres. It's listed that on the plat that's in the uh in your packets. Um, but I also believe that they would uh be combined. I may be mistaken on that. Um.
Could be.
But really, the uh quick run through of it, uh, I did ask the utilities director, you know, since this would be rezoned I three and, you know, maybe combined if there was a heavier version of I three, if like utilities and stuff would be an issue, and he said that there's kind of already that infrastructure in place uh at the intersection here. Uh, so just wanted to throw that out there as well.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Andy, did you want to come up? Did you want to say anything on this or? State your name for everybody.
Andy Beely with TMI Enterprise. Uh, we're trying to expand uh a rezonate for the, it's not a record yard, it's a repossession towing company, so it's not wrecked cars, it's just repossessions. I guess that's all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission. It seems pretty, pretty cut and dry. It it fits with other, the other things in the area to me. Looks like it would not pose too many issues.
Yeah, I agree. It's uh, it matches everything in the surrounding areas. Uh, uh, raise a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All right, have a motion to approve this item by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Gascon. Can you?
I thought I did, sorry.
That's okay. All right, machines are now open for voting. And that item is approved, and that will go before the council uh Thursday, this Thursday, May. All right, item seven B. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map and section one eleven dash seventy eight special conditional use requirements and procedures regarding property located at twelve four fifty section road, Port Allen, Louisiana, seven oh seven six seven. File number twenty twenty five dash oh nine, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as lot three containing sixty six acres, section thirteen, track six S, range ten E, six eight through fifty five. Rezoning from Ag three agricultural large scale to Ag one agricultural small scale with a special use permit for utilities minor services. Mr. Burgon.
Yep, so uh this tract will essentially be cut out of the larger Ag three tract. Uh, we had labeled it utilities minor, uh, basically to run through it real quick. Uh, minor services is uh municipal or private utilities with a local impact. Uh, they don't specifically mention a water well, which is, this is like the parish's water well, but major utilities is uh, you know, railroad lines, airports, you know, not as heavy as uh, you know, one water well on the property.
Yeah.
Uh, so utilities minor for Ag one has to be special use permit. Uh, the one thing I was going to recommend since the special use permit can have stipulations was essentially as long as the property itself is owned by the parish, it would apply, but the parish, for whatever reason in the future, either sold it or if the well got, you know, shut down, then it would, you know, go away the special use permit, but I know it's more of like the council to kind of uh.
Like an expiration for the special use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know it's kind of on them to dictate, but just, you know, if y'all had any better ideas, I guess. Uh, but yeah, e- everything in this area is essentially, you know, some form of agricultural zone property, except for there's like a commercial one you head to the uh intersection on the west, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burgon, for that explanation. So, does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners.
I'm gonna make a recommendation for approval with the special use permits.
With any stipulations?
The stipulation to where, how to just, if the land is sold, the permit.
Yeah, yeah, or I guess, as long as the parish owns, you know, this new tract, it would apply, but once, if the parish, for whatever reason, you know.
We need a reapplication for the special use.
Yeah, they would have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Ownership change.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause i- if you go through, you know, Ag one with special use, you can have like some form of like uh kennel services and stuff like that. So, you know, as long as the parish was in ownership, I would.
So, so basically.
Say, that would never be the case.
Yeah, that wouldn't be the case.
Yeah.
Approval with termination of the special use upon sale of the land.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so again, Mr. Vale has uh made a motion to approve with the special use and the condition that if the land be sold, uh, the special use would terminate. And then we have a second by Mr. Brown, so machines are open for voting. And that item passes as well. All right, item seven D. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map rezoning request of Carolyn Blanchard. Skip one. Oh, I skipped, oh.
Yeah, that one.
Public facilities one.
Oh, okay, I sure did. You let me mark it, Mallory, that you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, item seven C. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation designation maps zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map for rezoning request of West Baton Rouge regarding property located at thirty six oh five Rugan Road, Port Allen, Louisiana, seven oh seven six seven. File number twenty twenty five dash ten, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as three thousand sixty five point five four six acres designated as six hundred and nineteen point six zero acres in section four, track seven S, range eleven E, s- east uh east six seventeen point eight acres in section five, track seven S, range eleven E, one hundred and forty six point six six acres in section six, track seven S, range eleven E, one hundred and sixty acres in section eight, track seven S, range eleven E, two hundred and forty seven point zero zero acres in section nine, track seven S, range eleven E, six hundred and thirty four point eight eight six acres in section twenty nine, track six S, range eleven E, six hundred and forty point six zero zero acres in section thirty two, track six S, range eleven E, fifteen through two, through two C. Rezoning from Ag three agricultural large scale and C dash one point three regional scale commercial to PF, public facilities.
Phew.
Yeah. PF. Mr. Burgon.
Yep, so uh for that public facilities, this uh piece of property will be for the uh parish's future fire station and sheriff substation. Uh, the Ag three and C one point three, this is that strip of one ninety where I'd forget the exact measurement, but there's maybe three hundred foot of uh commercial C one point three offset from like the center line, and then uh the Ag three is basically touched, so there would be a four acre corner section on Rugan and one ninety for this uh future fire station. Uh, so that's where the agriculture comes in. Uh, you know, for the fire station, there's a median cut right there for them to go, you know, east or west, and then obviously you can hit north to ru- on Rugan for anything north of uh the uh piece of property. And uh I, when I went through the uh zoning criteria, they had land use same or similar. This would be our first uh public facility zone, piece of property.
Nubbing around.
So, it, you know, it's hard for me to say yes, but it's also, you know, a fire station to serve the public, so I figured it would at least, you know, match the area, so wanted to explain that.
Got you. And is it correct that this, the fire station would in fact take the place of two other, of the Rose Hill and the other fire station or that would just be a separate?
I'm, I'm not positive. I, I'm not positive on that. I'd, I'd note that this is the site for a new one. I don't know if there are any are being, you know.
I don't think there are.
Torn down or.
Oh, just an empty one, okay, all right. Thank you much. All right, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment or had they have any questions on this particular item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the commission.
I'll raise a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve that item by Mr. Vale and a second by Mr. Rodry. Go ahead and place your vote.
Glad to see us using public facilities.
All right, so that item passes as well. All right, we'll move on to seven D. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map rezoning request of Carolyn Blanchard, et al., CEO Terry Bajron, Terry B. Bajron regarding property located at nineteen oh six, nineteen sixteen, nineteen twenty six, nineteen thirty six, nineteen forty six, nineteen fifty, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty eight, twenty thirty eight, twenty forty eight, twenty one ten, twenty one twenty, twenty one thirty, twenty one forty, twenty one fifty, twenty one eighty, twenty two forty four, Plantation Avenue, Port Allen, Louisiana, seven oh seven six seven. File number twenty twenty five dash eleven, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as track eight two containing one point eight one acres, forty three B through thirty four, track eight three containing one point oh six acres, forty three B through thirty five, C S D Klein Blanchard property, lot three, forty three B dash eighteen, lot four, forty three B through nineteen, lot six, forty three B through twenty one, lot seven, forty three B through twenty two, lot eight, forty three B through twenty three, lot nine, forty three B through twenty four, lot ten, forty three B through twenty five, lot eleven, forty three B through twenty six, lot twelve, forty three B through twenty seven, lot thirteen, forty three B through twenty eight, lot fourteen, forty three B through nineteen, lot fifteen, forty three B through thirty, lot sixteen, forty three B through thirty one, lot seventeen, forty three B through thirty two, master plan change, rezoning from RSF three and C dash one point three to RSF two with waivers. So this is a master plan change and will require a super majority. All right. Take your time, Mr. Burgon.
Okay. So uh, I guess just to kind of explain, uh, a bunch of these lots were, you know, created at some point way back when. I didn't do all my uh history research. Uh, but essentially there is a uh lot that kind of surrounds all of them to the uh, to the east, and that lot is the one that is rezoned, the RSF three and uh C one point three. And basically, that uh lot A two, when I just described, all of these, you know, residential uh lots will basically have their property lines pushed back, essentially uh eliminating that lot. Uh, and they all are being rezoned RSF two to match the lots that are existing on Plantation Avenue. Uh, with the waivers, just a some, a couple of these just don't have the uh required whis on Plantation Avenue. They were just, you know, created that way whenever they, you know, created each individual lots, that's where they come in at. Uh, but, you know, as they currently stand, they don't have the minimum lot area. This change basically gives them at least the minimum lot area. So, uh, that's the uh waiver explanation.
Very good. All right, is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Any questions, concerns from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item seven uh D and open it up to the commissioners.
So the expectation is that all of these lots will grow, but there will be no generation of a new, any new lots or anything. I see there's some spots that are circled on the map uh in our packet that has, that's just the corners, just the boundaries.
Or did you look at the colored map?
That's one he looked at right there. Yeah.
Okay, the circle, that's uh just where we post the signs.
Oh, okay, all right, perfect.
So go to the colored map that was just that, that was added, um, and you'll see exactly.
Okay, I got you.
Where if they want to leave commercial or what they want to. Change operating, when you see the explanation behind it.
Yeah, yeah.
We, Cor Corbert is here, he's gonna have questions.
Yep. This is uh.
Oh, we should review this.
Yeah, yeah.
Corey, did you want to say anything on this? I'm sorry, I passed you right by.
No, I don't, unless y'all have a question, but it's, it's really that the, the, the small narrow lots that are behind.
Come on, yeah, come on, little.
It's hard for me to highlight without hanging on.
The, the big change is the small, the small narrow lots behind the, the, the existing lots. That's gonna go away and they're gonna be added to the existing lot, so it's, as, as Brandon said, it's increasing the size of the lots that, that are out there today. And it's gonna eliminate these two pieces of, of property.
Okay, yeah. I'll raise a motion to approve with waivers.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with waivers by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Rebet. And that item passes. And again, that will go before the, the council Thursday.
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, item seven E. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning plan under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map for rezoning request for John and Stacy Dupree regarding property located ten one hundred Bush Road, Bush, Louisiana, seven oh seven two zero, file number twenty twenty five dash twelve, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as lot six dash eight. Yutan North Farms containing two uh acres, more or less, twenty two dash nineteen rezoning from Ag two agricultural moderate scale to Ag three agricultural large scale.
It is, they are master plan changes, the next two.
Oh, they are master plan changes, so again, will require a super majority. Brandon, you have anything on this?
Um, basically, this is a, just neighboring uh property owners, uh, kind of just exchanging land between each other. Uh, the, basically, it's, it's going from Ag two, uh, because it has, uh, let me clear it, messed it up. Cause it's at one point nine acres according to the assess site, uh, after the exchange, it'll be over the uh four acres for Ag three. Um, and yeah, it's, everything in this area is, you know, currently zoned some form of Ag. Uh, there's Ag three just to the west of them, uh, currently, so.
And the reason why it's a master plan change is because it's, it's stated on our master plan as a rural residential.
Oh, instead of going, so going to Ag three.
So to make it, just to be safe, I just made a master plan changes because it, it's confusing on the master plan why, why we have rural.
That, that, that's my question, why is it going to Ag to Ag, why is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
This is a land change, land exchange that, that's into compliance with Ag here.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment or ask any questions on this particular, anybody here to represent this item? Come on up, state your name, please.
Stephen Baum, the land surveyor. Uh, essentially what they want to do is um swap zonings, um, and uh for the lot that's highlighted now, they're just going to combine those lots into one. The lot next door is going to essentially uh take the zoning from the previous. So basically, they just want to swap zone, zonings is what, essentially what they want to do.
Okay. Appreciate the information on that, thank you. All right, anybody from the public? Anybody else like to comment on this item? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone, state your name for the record, please.
Joshua Collins. We, we came for this because the sign said that it was for uh rezoning subdivision. So, I was, we were trying to figure out, they only gonna do it for agriculture now and just join the two lots together as a farm land kind of? Or is it gonna be a, cause we took it as they were gonna have a subdivision they were trying to build back there, yeah. And we were just trying to figure out exactly what was going on.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, maybe to save you a trip, I guess the best way to explain it would be the property that's highlighted.
Right.
Essentially, that property line would get moved over to cut off the neighboring property, and everything north of that would get added to the.
Okay, so they're just, they're just gonna conjoin everything together, basically.
Kind, kind of like you said, it's almost flip-flopping, just you can't.
Just because it says subdivision doesn't mean it's a full-blown. Everything's a subdivision, so if someone moves a certain line, one line, that is a subdivision.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's just that, it's just how it's defined, that's how we have to.
Okay, okay, yeah, but we didn't know, we was, yeah, that's all good.
It's not a, it's not a three hundred lot subdivision.
That's what we were thinking, it was like, ah, thank y'all.
But, but good for you guys for coming and then asking those questions.
Yes.
All right, anybody else in the public have any questions or comments on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then open it up to, for the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend it for approval.
All right, we do have a motion by Mr. Vale for approval and a second by Ms. Jackson. Go ahead and cast your vote. And that motion passes, and again, this will go before the, the council Thursday. All right, item seven F. An ordinance amending chapter one oh four zoning to incorporate amended zoning designation map zoning map under section one oh four dash three establishment of districts official zoning map for rezoning request for farm code, CO Gerald Ruckel regarding property located ten two forty Bush Road, Bush, Louisiana, seven oh seven two oh, file number twenty twenty five dash thirteen, described by the West Baton Rouge Assessor as lot five dash eight containing five point oh one acres and lot six dash B containing three point six six, six six acres, Yutan North Farm, twenty two dash eighteen C, rezoning from Ag three agricultural large scale to Ag two agricultural moderate scale, and again, a master plan change that requires a super majority.
Yep, this is just a neighboring property. He's going uh to Ag.
Two.
Two, I'm, I'm getting confused myself. He's going to Ag two, uh, minimum's one point five acres, he is one point six.
Okay.
And the reason why it's split up like this is because it's master plan changes, so I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
Okay.
Just trying to cover all of them.
Cover all the bases, I got you. Okay. Uh, okay, and is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Corey.
I think it is Corey. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open this up to the commission for a motion.
For the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Vale, second by Mr. Gascon. All right. Machines are open for voting. And that item passes, and will go before the council on Thursday. All right, uh, item eight, adjournment of the zoning section of this meeting. A motion to adjourn by Ms. Jackson, a second by Mr. Brown.
Yeah, that'd be faster than that there.
And the zoning portion of the meeting is adjourned. Item nine, approval of the minutes uh from the previous meeting for the planning section. Uh, that was on April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Everybody have a chance to review that? Everybody have a chance to review those. A motion approved. Motion to approve those minutes by Mr. Reed and a second by Mr. Valle. Go ahead and cast your vote. And those minutes are approved. Item ten, correspondence.
None at this time.
All right, item eleven, public hearing, plat file number twenty twenty five dash ten. This is the final plat showing survey of exchange of property between lot six dash A, six B and five A of Yutan North Farm roads into lot six dash A dash one and five dash A dash one, located in section forty and forty one, tract five dash S, range eleven E, southeastern land district, west of the Mississippi River, West Baton Rouge Parish, Louisiana for John Dupree. And this is uh with setback waivers for the final plat.
Yep, so uh for basically going back to our last two uh rezonings that we had, uh there is a shed that's basically located on the property line. So, you know, that kind of pops up here with the uh, I guess subdivision uh of, of, of land. Uh, you know, that side setback is ten feet for, you know, either ag, ag two or three. But on the, in your packets, the platch is basically the shed being on top of the uh property line, so this is.
And this line is, and this is line like ten feet off, obviously.
It didn't have the rights, it's not on, it's not over the lines.
Correct, I was just showing you on image with the plat, that's in front of you is circled and um Mr. Seab has the exact measurement inside of the subdivision waiver language, he's gotta add it to the plat.
Stephen Baum, how you doing?
Uh, so yeah, so we're, they're looking to, they would like to keep the lines, I guess, between them the same as usual. And uh it's kinda, it's an amicable agreement between both, both owners. So they were seeking the, the waiver for the setbacks uh for the shed. I believe it's uh, the shed's right around, it's right around a half a foot off the property line.
That's a pretty big shed, looks like.
Yes, yes.
Can't be moved.
Uh and I did consult, I, I did consult with them about possibly moving and jogging around the, the shed, but I think they stated, I think the gentleman to the left, Mr. Dupree, would have liked to leave the, the, the line as is, being that he has a, yeah, I believe it's a pipe fence going all, going around his, going to his property as it is now.
And you said a, a half, about a half foot on.
It's a half, it's almost exactly half a foot off the property line.
Okay. Any questions for?
You said it's a physical, a physical barrier, a pipe fence to the left. I think that that, whenever you kind of were to take a look at this, it would, it wouldn't look like something that was on, you know, over the line.
Right.
No, that's it, that's all I had.
And it does have to be super majority.
Yes. All right, uh yes, anybody else from the public, yes ma'am, come on, come on up to the microphone, state your name, please, for the record.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, my name is Cynthia Matthews, I just saw Farm Co. up there and I was trying to see, um, who is that? Who is that representing? Who are they representing?
Uh there's nobody here representing Farm Co., is there? No, I, I don't know who the owner of the property is.
Who are the two people um exchanging lines?
It'd be Farm Co. and Mr. Dupree.
And Mr. Dupree. Hmm, is that close to that railroad track? Right there on Bush Road? Extinction.
There's another lot between them.
Lot down from there. Yeah.
Okay.
This is the railroad track here, and their lot is here.
So one lot.
There's two lots in between.
Two lot, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to see where exactly where that is. Okay, that's all right.
That's it? All right, thank you very much, anybody else in the public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for motion. Remember, if y'all make a motion to approve, it has to be with the setback waivers and as Mallory stated, need a super majority.
I'll make a motion to approve with the setback waivers.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve uh with the setback waivers, and again, that was about a half foot uh from Mr. Valle, and we have a second by Mr. Rodri. Go ahead and cast your vote. And that item passes. All right, item twelve, other business, so we have scheduled public hearing, we have the council meeting this Thursday, May eighth, and the next planning and zoning is scheduled for May twenty, twentieth.
No, I've canceled it.
Cancelled.
Yes.
Canceled.
I have canceled it, uh we have a clear agenda.
Clear agenda, all right.
Oh, there it is, sorry.
That's the date of my mom's surgery, so that works out. All right, uh item thirteen is adjourned. I looked up and it had the first and the second.
Ms. Green found my trigger.
All right, so we have a, a motion to adjourn by Ms. Green and a second by Ms. LeBlanc.
That was quick. I'm like, I wanna go pickleball.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thanks everyone.
Yeah, I would much prefer to see a physical boundary, like a white fence, in there forever, than for somebody to jog an imaginary line.
I agree, just, just to, just to, just to give.
Just to give the next, the next owner.